Hey Huber, this is Sheena Mays and Cindy Schwartz. Um, we are starting this one, uh, just because I said that I was going to, uh, make another video, uh, because I was pretty pissed off with going to the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting and, um, NVR, which is Ryan Holmes, was requesting, um, a variance and I went to that meeting to, uh, speak against the approval and I went to a meeting the month before, um, over the same topic. They were asked to come back and, um, bring some additional things, um, and why I was there and it was my turn to speak during a public hearing, uh, I was interrupted twice and pretty much told to move along. So, uh, that really irked me because, uh, the only person that should interrupt me is the chair because that is who presides over that meeting and with that, she is, um, only supposed to interrupt me if I am going like out of line, I'm not staying on topic. Um, you know, things along that nature to where I am breaking the rules. Um, they don't have to agree with what I say. Um, yeah, so, and then the fact that I, you know, I was interrupted and everything, just, uh, when I was staying on topic, I wasn't breaking rules, really irked me and, uh, we're going to show you that public comment period now where it's, it's just me, I was the only one there.
Uh, in reference to this, I know that the house next door at, uh, thirty-five-eleven sold, um, pretty much one month almost exactly later. So I'm not sure when Huber Heights zoning actually realized that there was a problem because that was talked about the last time. It wasn't Ryan, it was Huber Heights that thought like, hey, the houses are too close. Um, so if that was, if they started the contract on June seventeenth, which is what records show, and then just a month and twelve days later, Huber Heights was notifying Ryan like, hey, there's, there's an issue with how close these houses are. Why, that we were only a month and twelve days in, that house was not complete then. Why did we complete this house knowing that we weren't in compliance? Um, and when we continue to build and we don't stop the construction knowing that, then, you know, we know that we have a significant violation. Uh, the approval of this is going to set a precedence for after the fact variances.
Ma'am, this board does not set precedents. Each, each case is, uh, weighed on its own merits. The Board of Zoning Appeals does not issue precedents, does not set precedents.
Okay, well, what we do for a development now with an after the fact variance approval, somebody, another developer can come and do that as well and say, well, hey, you gave NVR the approval, we messed up too. Okay, well, th- this is public comment, correct? Like to where I can issue a comment? Okay, so, uh, the reasons to approve a variance is unnecessary hardship due to circumstances specific to the property and not caused by themselves. Need I say more? Uh, the hardship cannot be as a result of NVR's own actions. This was known, like I said, at least since July. Did they finish the house prior to asking? Uh, you should approve a variance when the applicant demonstrates that a literal enforcement of the zoning would res- would result in unnecessary hardship or practical difficulties due to the unique physical conditions of this speci- specific property. And if you go back and you look, that lot size is the same lot size as the other ones surrounding it. So this wasn't a hardship that was the city zoning or anything, this, this was all. Are you here because you knew that I was going to be here? Did they request you to be here for that? I know, I was ju- I was just asking a point blank question.
So ma'am, can I ask, what is, what is the point that you are trying to relay to this board that has to make a vote on this? Um, there's things that's beyond the boards. How can I say this to be appropriate? Beyond our reach to be able to do. So what, what is, what is the point, uh, you are trying to relay to this board?
The point that I'm trying to make is that this was known before the house was finished. It was known that we violated the zoning here. The house was still finished. And then here and now it's after the fact that we're, that they're asking for a variance and the variance is being requested over a hardship that they created. That's mainly what I'm trying to say.
Hold on, I want you to keep that on there. I just wanted you to pause it. Okay, y'all see that, that picture on your screen? They kept that picture up, as you can see, for that whole period where, you know, they're going over the, the variance. That's the side that they didn't need the variance on. This, this is what they needed the variance for. So, do you think that was, um, done on purpose? That's, that picture's not even the correct picture. That's the other side.
Really bad word.
No.
Are you kidding me right now? So, and can I just say, because?
Again. There you go.
Who is the chair of this committee? What is her name?
Uh, Eva Newby.
Yes, Ms. 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 Eva. I am appalled that she even asked you. You want me to go and take it off now?
Yeah, you could take it off. I was just referen- I just wanted to reference that picture.
That is absolutely ridiculous.
So you see how much space there is?
It looks like there's not a problem.
Because there isn't on that side. But that's the picture that they chose to have up there.
Who put that picture up there?
Uh, Dawn.
So, um, Ms. Eva asking you what the point of your whole, I, do you see my face at this point? Like, uh, my blood pressure is up right now because what I want to say is, the point is, don't approve the variance for a bunch of dickwads who own a bunch of property and are a billion dollar corporation just because they come in here after the fact and want you to approve it.
Well, the thing of it is, is that, um, you know, the very points that I was trying to make to where, yes, I did not use the correct wording. Um, I said that it sets a precedence and it-
It technically does set a precedence.
It does not set a legal precedence.
But it sets a precedence because if one person does it, then someone else is going to use that case to prove that it has been done before and so they should be able to do it.
And that's exactly what I said, but still, the variances are done case by case. So an actual legal term of precedence does not apply here. But I'm just a regular citizen trying to share my input. So I used precedents. It was wrong, um, but at the same time, you don't, don't interrupt me.
Um, no.
So, and I've looked this up, Sheena, I know what I'm talking about with this precedence.
No, 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 I'm saying, no, I'm saying you are, you're correct, but I'm also saying that it wouldn't matter in a court of law because I think that someone could use, still use it in a court of law to argue.
Yes, and that, my whole thing was, is that I was just trying to say, if we let one do one thing, then they can reference that when another developer or a builder or whatever comes in and they try to say the same thing and they're like, they've done it after the fact, they knew beforehand. Here it's like a foot off and they're like, well, you approved NVR, so that was the point that I was trying to make. And it even, even more so shows now that everything that I was saying, I have come to find out, is the exact reason why they approved the variance. I am not going to say how I got the information, but from what I've heard, because I did not hear this firsthand, is that NVR was threatening to sue. So they were going to sue because I guess there is a variance that has been approved in the past and that's what they're going off of. But Sheena looked back and she did not find any variances for after the fact, um, you know, for violating, uh, setbacks and whatnot. So, is there one there? I, I don't know. We're going to have to do a public records request and, uh, try to figure that out. But that's going to probably take weeks because we don't get answers right away. Um, but it's exactly what I was talking about. So I was interrupted when, so I'm taking my time out of my day at six o'clock in the evening when I have a family to feed and it's dinner time. I'm taking my time to go up there and sit and then here I've got to be interrupted and pretty much told to move along.
Because you were saying the things he was already worried about, Cindy, like.
Don't set yourself up in the situation. And what Dawn said is when I said precedents and he said, "We don't set legal precedents here, yada, yada, yada," like, okay with him, that's your exact defense if NVR is going to try to sue. That's your exact defense is that we don't set the precedence. It's a case by case basis. And so if NVR is threatening, I'm going to see you guys because you guys approved a variance before that's kind of like this. Okay then, tell them to go ahead and bring it because it's a case by case basis, like.
Isn't that what we paid for?
Yeah. I mean, didn't I just talk about in the last video that we're, we approved over or around like seven hundred thousand dollars for our law firm? But then here, oh, we, we don't want to fight NVR, like.
So do we know for sure when that house was completed?
Uh, no, but I can tell you that you did not build, you moved into a, the home that was already built. The whole building process, you go there, you pick out, you know, like your site. You pick out like, if it's in Orion area in VR, you pick out the individual, like, houses that you can choose from, like three or four or something, that's a cookie cutter house. You pick that and you sign all the documents to go and get started. From the day that you sign those documents, that is when the land is transferred from DEC, DEC Land Company or who, one of their affiliate LLCs over to NVR, uh, for the deed of that land. Then in, NVR, Ryan builds that home. It typically takes three months. From, from the start to the finish, if this, this home, I, I have it written down, it was under contract.
Because when we moved, they told us it was going to take longer than that.
My home was built in three months. So the home next to them was built around that same time. So from five-twenty-eight to eight-twenty-seven, that's when construction happened on the home right next door at thirty-five-eleven.
So that would have been right at it.
That's three months. So.
So they're back to that timeframe?
Yeah, so if this home was built or it started to be built, where did I? Uh, they started on six-seventeen and then on seven-twenty-eight, that memorandum from Dawn was created. It was one month and twelve days in to where they realized that the foundation was not in the correct spot on that one side.
Two months out from being completed.
Exactly. That's what I said, like, and guess what? They fi- they figured that out in July. Okay, July twenty-eighth. August, there was, they, they could have applied for the variance, they never did. September, they could have applied for the variance. Um, and then here, they waited until, I think the BZA has their meetings on the first Wednesdays, um, of each month. They waited until after that Wednesday in September. So they would know that the first time that they would be in front of the, uh, BZA for approval of a variance was going to be in October. Making damn sure that the house was completely built beforehand. My argument was is July twenty-eighth, when they figured out they weren't in compliance, they should have stopped right then and there. And applied for the variance.
Huber should have told them, they couldn't, and why is it that we don't have something in place where when something like that happens, that the city of Huber doesn't say, okay, all building needs to stop. You have to apply for a variance.
Because you have to do that through the courts. And at the end of the day, it should be up to the BZA to where this is brought in. This can be brought in after the fact, but we are going to judge based on after the fact. And hey, you didn't stop and you might have to tear that whole house down and you know what? That's not our fault. That's your fault for not following the rules and you're going to be out of that money.
So with the variance now, what do they have to, what are, what do they have to do? Because I know that the fire mar- there was something with the fire marshal that they had to clear, they had to make sure that something was listed in the deed for the, the home for all future.
Oh, yeah. Uh, the two things that you just said, um, were supposed to be being done. The, that side of the house, um, has to be like pulled apart and have to have a special like drywall and stuff from the footers all the way up.
That's nice to see you.
Uh, yeah, I know. Um, that's one of the things I brought up in October and also, uh, I did bring up that we're lied to when we buy our homes. Um, so how are we going to make sure that the new buyers or the buyers are going to know that they have a variance because on, you know, on their deed because that affects your property value and could affect the selling. Hell, the people that they were under contract to and were building this house for, backed out of the deal.
Well, and they were lying about that whenever they were there.
Yeah, so something else I want to show you guys, the day of, um, that last meeting, um, you know, they said that they still don't have a buyer yet for that property. Um, you know, but as soon as that they do, like, there's things that they have to sign and whatever that's going to show them that they have a variance. Let me show you something though. This is the house that, you know, I've, I've been talking about. There's my car. I, I went past there the day of that meeting. Now, hold on. You see that? Says sold. But they said they haven't sold the house yet. So, and as, hold on, let me get it. Okay, so you could see that, and then you can see when exactly that I took that picture. So as you could see, it was, it was the day of at one-twenty-two. So the day of that meeting, so just to show.
And then they came to the meeting and said that they didn't have a buyer for that property?
Yes. I didn't even get to talk about that. But yeah, it's just another thing. So am I full of shit or somebody else? Because? So, there it is. That's why I'm mad. Um.
Lots of comments, lots of comments. Let's have them all.
Yeah, so.
Sketchy. People are so sketchy and it, hmm. And why? Why would the city of Huber not do their own due diligence?
Well, they did because Ryan would have just continued on and wouldn't have even asked for the variance.
But they did it because you and I went to that meeting and.
It, yeah, but that meeting existed because Huber Heights zoning went out there and seen. So they were the ones that acknowledged that that setback didn't look right. They measured it and, yeah, so. And Ryan cannot have anybody sign closing documents or move into that house until the variance was approved.
Oh.
So.
Even if they sold it?
Yeah, they, they can have somebody on contract to, to sell it, but they cannot complete closing documents. And so, other than, so it's, they probably have that, uh, the deed marker in there that says that there's a variance on the property in with a stack of like this, of, you know, papers that they're going to have to sign to where people aren't going to, you know, really acknowledge it or whatever. I mean, before I moved here, I mean, I didn't pay attention to a lot of this stuff. I didn't know what a variance was and how it affects your property. So.
The first time that we bought a house, I just felt like I was signing documents forever, you know? The second time when we bought this house, I paid attention as I was signing documents. Um, but I still feel like there's a lot of people who, because that process is such a pain and there's so many documents, like, they make it seem like it's just basic everyday stuff, but I mean, literally, you live and you learn. Um, a lot of times, and this is the biggest purchase typically that you're ever going to make in your life is when you buy a home. And so, and to read all of the documents, every single one while you're in office with them and everything, when they're just like giving you a rundown of each one, this one just says this, this one just says that. Um, yeah, so you know what else I didn't talk about in the last video? And I completely forgot is that, um, CRA agreement with Sims Development. Again, that's something that's in closing documents to where they have a CRA agreement with the city. Uh, it's a tax abatement for, um, a hundred percent for years one through ten and then eleven through fifteen. You know how much? Well, it's a tax abatement for all fifteen years, but one, years one through ten, they don't have to pay any property taxes. You want to know how much they have to pay from eleven years to fifteen years?
They have to pay a minimum service payment. That's what it's called because the taxes are abated. Ninety-five hundred dollars a year.
What?
And some of them say that they didn't know. They say in the documents that state it. But yeah, anybody interested in that? Go to the, uh, um, agendas for the meeting on August twenty-third and you can read through that CRA agreement with Sims that says that. So these, these people are going to be moving in there and being like, yeah, ten years, you know, I ain't got no property taxes and year eleven comes and just smacks them in the face because it's, that's almost a grand a month. You know?
They'll be dropping like flies. Nobody will be living there.
Yeah, so, and that's something that our city agreed to let them have.
That's nutty.
And that's what they're, they're wanting that same type of agreement for the additional units they're putting in over there. And it's, I did the math and it kind of averages out to where honestly, they might save like fifteen, twenty thousand dollars all in all at the end of it, like from, if they paid property taxes from the very beginning versus they paid minimum service payments from eleven year to fifteen year, uh, what the difference would be. But people, if they don't know, like, if you live in the Gables, you need to go back and review all of your paperwork and you need to start, if you plan on living there for a long time, uh, past ten years, you need to start saving money now. Start saving your money a little bits now so that you are able to pay the minimum service payments of ninety-five hundred dollars. They could be more. I, it's just, that's the minimum uh, for them other five years.
My God.
Yeah, can you imagine getting smacked in the face with that?
So, there's that.
Yeah, so that was very important that I forgot to bring up. About that. So, yeah, we'll see, uh, how, uh, that's going to work out uh, when Sims Development comes back for, to see if they can have approval, um, to continue that on for the next phase of units. I can tell you that I did watch the meeting, uh, from twenty-twenty-three when this was approved. Guess who were the no votes to not approve this type of CRA agreement?
I have no clue.
Go back and watch the meeting. You'll see that they're no longer on the dais.
Imagine that.
Yep.
We're just full of good news today.
Yep. So anyways, I do want to give a positive, um, because I was just driving, I drive on it every day pretty much, but I was driving on it today. Um, we're just waiting for the traffic light, um, mast arms to come in. They're supposed to be in, in December, knock on wood. But the getting in and out of carriage trails on two oh one is great. The left turn lane to- The left turn lane to turn in there is long and needed.
Yeah.
Um, I can't wait for the light to be up so that we can actually like make safe left-hand turns out of the carriage trails onto two oh one. But just being able to like go and go right and you don't have to worry about the oncoming traffic like coming and
And being able to get back into carriage trails with that long turn lane is so much easier and safer.
Well, and that turn guides you to that too, because we had a lot of people coming in the wrong way. We have two signs that say do not enter.
It's true.
People were still going through there and now we have a line that shows like, no, you go past that and you go down one.
You would be like, no, 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 no!
Yeah. So, um, you know, I just I just wanted to uh comment on that to at least give a positive about something because uh I've been a little bitchy. Um, never. That's not me.
Oh, well.
Yeah, there's your positive, so.
Have a great day, guys.
See you next week.